I'd like to call this meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Michael Ann, can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Segada.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Very good.
If I could just have a moment, I'm going to record this also on my phone. Apologize.
All right.
Okay.
Y'all, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Michael Ann. Could we, those that are participating by phone, could you please identify yourself?
Kathy McQuary with RPS.
David Swanson with RPS.
AJ Bowers with CARI.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to our floor. All city offices will be closed on April 10th, 2020 in observance of Good Friday. Our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 14th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. I'm assuming here in the chambers, but we'll see how things play out. At this time, we will take committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley?
Okay. Tried to keep it very short. The Outdoor Recreation Task Force met on the 27th of February. We're working on a Google Doc with ideas to pass along to the city, and there's no meeting scheduled at this time. I attended the Senior Center AAA opening meeting for the site assessment on March 3rd. I attended the--
Frank Ferry.
I've joined.
Thanks, Frank.
I attended the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board meeting on the Marketing Plan Presentation on the 3rd. On March 6th, I attended the Comprehensive Plan Meeting at the Convention Center, and then I attended the March Senior Center Board Meeting today. Couple notes from that. Jean Lamb from Simron was added as a new board member, and also, the Senior Center did finally receive promised federal money from last year. Senior Centers are currently mandated to be closed through April 30th, but still provide services such as home-delivered meals and drive-through meals instead of congregant meals, along with some transportation and other essential services. They do anticipate budgetary changes on a state level that will trickle down and eventually reflect as possible budget cuts for the next fiscal year on a local level. I do want to mention that only 21% of people-- Oh, that's not-- How can they mute their phones? Should we tell them?
Yeah. Those that are participating by phone, if you can mute your phones, it would be appreciated for the time being. We're getting a lot of feedback in the committee room. Thank you.
It was mentioned that only 21% of people over 60 in Colfax County are taking advantage of the senior center services. You don't have to feel old to qualify. If you're 60 or over and would like to register to get some meals, call your local center. In Rattone, the number is 445-3278. There are also senior centers in Springer and Simron, and registration can be done over the phone, and when you drive through to pick up your first meal, you can sign the form. The next meeting for the senior center will be May 19th. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District will be meeting Thursday, March 26th, at 11:00 a.m. through Zoom conferencing. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes, Arthur Johnson, Memorial Library Advisory Board met on Tuesday, March 17th, at 5:30 p.m. Procedures for coronavirus at the library were discussed. Open bond status is waiting for paperwork to be signed by two more libraries before checks should be mailed out. Statistical report from the month of January 2015 is as follows. Donations received were $9,403.85. Majority of this, which is around $9,000, comes from state grants. Funds received were $59.15. Copies made $542.81. Memorals received $100. Programs held at the library was 14, attended by 59 persons. Stories held at the library was four, attended by 12 persons. Statistical report for the month of February 2020 is as follows. Donations received were $686.32. Funds received $119.31. Copies made $559.75. Memorals received were $103. Programs held at the library was 12, attended by 42 persons. Stories held at the library was four, attended by 13 persons. The Rattone Public Service Committee Board of Directors met on-- Meeting was held on February 28th, 2020, at 5:40 p.m. Office Manager and accountant Jessica Gonzalez discussed the financial information with the board members. The Bureau Cannon Line Inspection Proposal was discussed and approved by the board members. General Manager Sandy Chappas reported that Jessica Gonzalez would be leaving RPS for a new position. Sandy also reported that there were 205 new meters installed, making a total of 593, and all reported to be working good. Assistant General Manager Dave McSeen reported that they had limited run unit four with minor problems, and work is reported to be limited, work conducted by screws around town. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez?
Yes, went to the Water Board-- the Rattone Water Board had a meeting, and it was held a telephone conference on the 23rd at 5:00 p.m. We heard reports on the Water Board projects and all around schedule are almost finished. We approved the financials for the current operations. We then went into closed session to discuss manager evaluation, and after that, we came out and we had discussed general manager performance status, and we removed him from probation and approved him to full-time manager effective March 17th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Mayor Pro Tim?
Good. I did miss the Water Board meeting, so I'm grateful for Commissioner Chavez for being there. Housing Board Authority met on March 10th, and they are, of course, managing the lunches for the school kids. Anyone under the 18 and under is eligible to receive a lunch. They had been working on some repairs, but I'm guessing that those have ceased right now. Yesterday, Director Terry Baca put out this message, effective immediately. He is closing the office to public access. Any move in and move out will be by appointment. Make the appointment by telephone. We will have people needing to do adjustments. We will do this by appointment, and if they stay behind the glass, we are serving lunches out of the office, which is being done outside of the office. I've not met with the Chamber Board recently, but I have been in touch. They are-- they have put out a notice to their general members that the current board members are stepping down, and there is no longer commission board available by the end of this month. The Center for Community Innovation has not met recently, and will probably not meet until after the COVID-19 restrictions are lifted. That's all I have.
All right. As for myself, two weeks ago, I attended the NLC Congressional Cities Conference. It was time-- that's the time that we meet with all of our state delegates. We got to meet with Senator Heinrich, Senator Udall, Congresswoman Small, Congressman Lujan, and staff for Congresswoman Holland. We discussed the opportunity zones, passed information on to Mr. Berry. Mr. Heinrich's office thought there might be some wrangling we could actually do to move that boundary. Don't know how far we are along with that, but he felt fairly confident that we could do it. Says it's a shame that you're being stopped by basically 200 feet for the Marriano Building Project, so we're looking into that. Discussed broadband, and then just mainly infrastructure, and then senior services. There was one other thing that just slipped my mind, senior moment, but I'll think of it later. But other than that, it was a good trip. Got a lot accomplished. Of course, this was the first time that we went without Mr. Fulgini, so it was a little different in some aspects. We did receive many condolences from many, many people while we were there, as he was great. Appreciated, not just in New Mexico, but throughout the United States. So it was kind of heartfelt at times. But that's basically what I have right now. So, with that being said, let's move on to Item 6. 6A, Approval of March 10th, 2020 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. Are you in your packet? Do you have time to study them?
I saw no problem with it, and I'm going to approve.
Second. The motion, and a second to approve the meetings as written. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Segada.
Yes. Item B, Presentation of fiscal year 19 final audit reports by Carr, Riggs, and Ingram. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, we do have the representatives of the audit firm, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, on the phone for you. For them to submit their report by telephone is authorized method by the state auditor, so that's okay. We do have on the screen a PowerPoint presentation to go along with this. Michael Ann, I don't know if you have any comments on the process or the report tonight?
So I did want to mention that we did post notice of potential quorum so that members of the RPS Board and also the Water Works Board could be in attendance at the meeting this evening. We have some that have joined us via the conference line, so I just wanted to make sure that we still have Kathy McQuary, David Swanson, and Frank Ferry on the line.
Correct.
Okay. Has anybody else joined the call other than AJ Bowers with CRI? Okay. So I've recorded that we have three RPS Board members that have joined us on the line.
And Mayor, I will now turn to the telephone, and Mr. Bowers, if you can hear me, we will give you the floor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all letting me call in, the change, actually, recent changes in the state with everything going on. So we'll go through that. I think you do have the PowerPoint presentation. And then we also hand out just the one sheet. So really, the one sheet is kind of like a takeaway. It's a two-page thing, kind of summarizes PowerPoint presentations. I'm not going to go-- I'm going to go pretty quick over this. I want to take up the time. Ultimately, on Slide 2, within the agenda, we're going to kind of talk about the timeline, the reports, pre-fension of the findings, some of the financial statement highlights, because I think that's what you guys are always paying attention to. You know, you're going to be wanting to know, how are you doing?
Other than AJ Bowers with CRI? Okay. I recorded that we have three RPS Board members.
Technical difficulties. Hang on one second.
Did your phone quit recording?
No. Pardon me. I believe what's happening is we have a delay. Someone is probably listening to either the broadcast or the Facebook stream.
Oh, okay.
So it's there coming back with a delay.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Mr. Bowers. You can--
Am I good, Michael Ann?
Yeah, we're getting some feedback there. But yeah, go ahead and proceed.
Okay. We'll go over some of the new and upcoming standards, and just a couple things from a value add. So next slide, on Slide 3, kind of the timeline. How long were in your hair, really? We started the audit back in-- really, back in June, July, we kind of started some of the planning, really, in August, September. Had the engagement letter signed. We did fieldwork August 9th and November 18th. We had rescheduled that date with you guys. The draft findings were delivered on the 12th. The report was actually dated December 16th. We had the exit conference before that, and we submitted it December 16th. From that process, it goes to the state's review, their release, which they did. They released it in February, and then now we're just presenting it to you all. The next slide is really the auditor's report. So in that financial statement, that, you know, 135 pages or so, we have really three different reports. The first one is going to be the report in the front. That's going to be your independent auditor's report. That is an unmodified opinion, so that's the best opinion you can get. What that means is that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with GAAP, and there's not any areas in which we could not obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence in order to render that opinion. So that's what we expected. There were no difference. You know, that's what it's been, so good job. That's what we always want to see. The next report that's going to be in there, it's towards the back. It's going to be the Generally Accepted Government Audit Standards Report on Internal Controls. And so that's what we call-- anything that's-- any audit that's done in the state of New Mexico is done under government auditing standards. We are required in the state of New Mexico to report anything that we find within our audit. Now, Yellow Book or Government Audit Standards has its own requirements. You have to report material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or material noncompliance. The city and RPS-- and so I'm going to mention, the city, RWW, and RPS are all in this report. There are no findings under Yellow Book that the city or RPS had. There were four findings that we call statutory, the state audit rule finding underneath the city, and then two from RPS. And on the next slide, we'll touch on those. The last report that's in there is the Report on Compliance Over Federal Awards. Now, under federal awards, we did test the airport improvement grant. We didn't have any federal findings that we noted, and again, we have an unmodified opinion. That, which means you complied in all the federal respects with the compliance requirements that have a direct material effect with them, and compliance of that program. So clean opinions, you know, minimal findings, pretty small items that were noted. One thing to note is, when it comes to internal controls, that's a negative assurance, which means these are items that we found others may exist that we did not identify, so we don't render an opinion on internal controls. We just test them and report on them for anything that we find. On the following slide, on Slide 5, that just lists out what the findings are, okay? So we discussed in detail the exit conference. They're laid out in detail in the back of that audit report, you know, around face to 133, 134, 135 area. And so when you see the findings themselves, NME is classified in the state of New Mexico, so because you live in New Mexico, they have to be in the report. And then the first four numbers, the 2017 or 2019, that's the year in which the finding began, and then the finding number within that year. When you see that there are other noncompliance or other patterns, again, in any other state, these would actually just be items that we report as an improvement point or comments to the board, just to let you know that they're out there. But they don't necessarily involve significant board action in order to do that. So that's what those findings are. I'm sure that the city can correct those pretty easily. I know that they've already gone over some of these items, and make sure that everything's in line. The next few slides, on Slide 6, we're just going to kind of look over the state of net position. So on the one-- on the two-page handout you have, it has all of the numbers for the last five years. So any of those numbers are really on here, but I like to show some of the graphs. So ultimately, your assets, you know, five-year trend, slight increase on assets in 2019 because of the airport improvement liabilities. You have this slow increase over time that mirrors the change in MPL and the OPEP, so the proportion of shares in para, in retiree healthcare. And the net position is consistent with, you know, the-- with a trend with the opposite of the net pension liability in the OPEP. So the next three graphs on Slide 8, you basically have a graph of your assets, right? You've got total assets, you've got total cash investments, and total capital assets. You see them tick up. In this last year, on Slide 9, or as far as Slide 8-- previous one, Slide 7, so Slide 8 is going to be your total liability. So the yellow line is going up. That's the net pension liability, the OPEP liability. So you see how that changes over time. The OPEP was put on the book of the city in 2018, because that's when you see the uptick of a couple million dollars. On Slide 9, that's going to be your net pension liability. One thing to pay attention to here is, anytime you go out to debt, this is one of those numbers. You know, in business, it's the equity number. So when you're looking at net positions, assets minus liabilities, you notice how much equity is there. The bottom line, the unrestricted net position where it ticks down to the negative, that's the one to pay attention to. Most of your assets are spoken for. All of the equity is sitting in-- it's sitting in capital assets with the debt. And when you have the net pension liabilities and the OPEP liabilities, what that does is it takes an unrestricted piece and it moves it negative. Now, bond folk understand this, but it's something that that way, anytime they ask what your bond ratings are or where that's sitting, you can understand that. And as you can see, from the 2017 year to the 2018 year, that change was due to the OPEP liability coming on the book in 2018. Okay? So just knowing what that is. Really, the next slide that we have are going to be on Slides 11 and 12. And this is the state of activity. It's going to be your income statement, so revenues and expenses. And really, for the last-- on the last five years, it's been pretty consistent. You know, pretty steady increase over the year. So that's actually all on Slide 11. Slide 12, I always like to look at the general fund, because that's your main operating fund. So if there's anything out of whack, you kind of understand that. So again, revenues consistent over five years, outface expenditures. Expenditures have been consistent with that five years. Cash consistent growth over a five-year timeframe. And the budget, you know, to act to the budget to variance, you haven't overextended that over the last five years. So these four graphs here, on 13, is going to be your expenses in the blue, and the revenues in the yellow. Okay? So really, with the exception of 2015, we're almost identical. Revenue is outpaced, and then you see a steady increase. On Slide 14, you see an increase in your cash and investments line in that blue line. The general fund on 15, that's just your budget carry variant, so it's showing how much you had in your final budget versus what you actually-- actual expenditures was. This is after all of your adjustments are made. Slide 6, too, we look at the business. Slide 6 is going to be a lot of RWW. Again, the assets, five-year trend, been consistent, liabilities, you know, those new debt in 2019, net pension liability. Again, those changes are-- or the net position, the changes are due to the net pension liability, the OPEP. So again, if we tick through, Slide 17 is going to show you pretty consistent numbers. We've got your cash investments, your total capital assets, your total assets. And then 18 is going to be your liability side, and you see those net pension liabilities in the blue, and the OPEP ticking up, which is on there, and you have the uptick in debt this year. And then on Slide 19 is going to be RWW with the net position. So again, your total net position is about 18, that's $18.9 million.
Kathy McQuary has left.
And then about $700,000 in unrestricted net position. Killer activities, if you go into Slide 20 and 21, 20 is just going to say that revenues and expenses are consistent. So when you look at Slide 21, again, you see the very consistent numbers. The BK, Rattone Public Service, we'll just kind of look at those last ones. 2023 is going to be the graph itself, again, showing the revenues and expenses of total assets, which the five-year trend really follows the asset line. Okay? You're fixed assets, because that's where the majority of everything is in Rattone Public Service. On the liability side, on Slide 24, again, no surprises, net pension liability, OPEP liability is going to be a driver there, which also affects Slide 25, and will show where that net position is. Okay? So it is positive on the unrestricted, and then again, most of the assets are sitting in-- most of the equity is sitting in the assets. Revenues and expenses for Rattone Public Service on Slide 26, and we'll jump into Slide 27 in a moment. It was inflated in 15 and 16 due to significant insurance proceeds, otherwise been consistent over those times, and the expenses are the same way. So when you see 15 and 16 on the revenue line, you have that insurance proceeds and everything else that kind of bells off. Okay. So on Slide 28, you know, that's where we look at the single audit. So when we talk about the airport improvement program, we had different direct material compliance requirements. So around these different areas, the activities allowed, the allow of cost, cash management, reporting, special tests. We have to test controls as well as compliance around all of these different compliant areas. So we test those, and again, we had an unmodified opinion, and there was no noncompliance that was noted. Slide 29, just a couple of upcoming standards that are going to affect you. One is GAFD Statement Number 84. That is effective through the year 2020. So this is anywhere where you have fiduciaries. This is going to be a pretty small impact for you guys. This is a big statement that's affecting a lot of folk, but you don't really have fiduciaries. However, if you do end up holding money for anybody else that's not for you, you have to ensure the way that you're accounting for that. And there's going to be actually a couple of statements that will change in the financial statements. The bigger one, I think, is going to really be the year 2021, and that's going to be fiduciary. So the current trend in the GAFD world, as we talked about, net pension liability, OPEP last night, is putting liability on the book. Statement 87 is leases. And so ultimately, right now, there's capital leases, or there's operating leases. Under Statement 87, in 2021, all leases are going to be considered capital leases. So anything that you have with some sort of agreement that acts like a lease becomes both a right-to-use asset and then becomes actually debt on there. So it doesn't change in the way that you're, you know, doing things on a cash basis, but it does affect the way that those numbers, again, adjust from a balance sheet perspective. So there's a lot of things going on, but there's some implementation guides out there. Got any questions, please reach out to us. We'll be more than happy to help you with that, or, you know, or really anyone on those. On Slide 30-- excuse me. The Information Technology Services, this is a growing trend within the industry. I had one client this year that was actually hit with a phishing scheme, and I've had multiple clients or multiple attacks that were done around the state this year. As part of the audit, we look at the financial system. So what we look at from the financial system, can we rely upon the reports that you're printing? Basically, when you give me a bank rec, does it add up? So that's what we're looking at. Can we rely upon those? We don't do IT environment assessment or anything along those lines for the network security. I always encourage all of our government clients, really all of our clients in the world that we live in, to be doing something when it comes to this. If it's not us, then someone. You should be at least working with IT experts of some sort in order to assess your system, your network. They conduct internal and external penetration tests, the data security, and they make recommendations for the things that you might need to consider in order to safeguard the information of the residents of the city of Rattone. So if you're ever interested in that, let me know, or get with someone. Like I said, we've got a group that's out in Florida. This is all that they do, that there's a lot of competent folks out there to do this. What happens is determined is that for the most part, the people are the weakness, so they find a way in, and then they just send you a bunch of phishing emails, and eventually, you know, someone falls for it. They do a lot of training on those, and you're holder of billions. So just paying attention to that. And then ongoing training, of course, we always encourage people to stay abreast of the ever-changing requirements, with Statement 87 coming in and how it may or may not affect the city. You know, GAFD is up to Statement 92 now, and it is coming quickly. So just always staying up to date with those. When you give you federal grants, making sure that you're compliant, and you put those controls around. I do want to commend the entire team. You know, Jimmy, Sandy, Michael Ann, you guys do a really good job for the city, and it's been a pleasure working with you. So really, on that last slide, we just want to say thank you. We've worked with you guys for six years now, and so we've hit our rotation number. So we're sad to see that we can't work with y'all anymore based on the state's information and the rotation itself, but we're still here. If you've got questions, please reach out to us. We want to be able to assist, and we'll work however we can to continue to support the city into the future. So with that, the really last slide just has my information. You can always reach out to me if you've got questions. Let me know. So what questions do you have?
Any questions for Randy?
None at this point. Good presentation. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And like I said, Michael Ann, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I think you guys do a really good job. I think you guys are resplendi up there to have-- I think you guys are resppy up there to have a good team in place.
Likewise, I appreciate that.
We agree with your, your comments there. We've got a pretty good staff. Thank you.
You do.
Mr. Berry, anything you'd like to add?
Um, I would comment to the commission that, uh, we will now, uh, post the full audit, uh, make that accessible from our website to, uh, those members of the public who would like to review the information. Correct in saying that?
Yes.
AJ, thank you for, uh, the fine service, and we look forward to talking to you again in the future.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it. Um, sorry I couldn't be up there this last year, but obviously, that wasn't going to be within the cards, but I really appreciate the time and, and your hospitality. So, um, we'll be in touch, and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I guess we could have asked Kathy there if they had any questions.
House left.
Sorry.
Slide over slightly. Uh, for the, uh, commission, uh, I think our next step will be to draft a request for proposals for upcoming, uh, independent auditor services. Of course, there's a process that, uh, the state auditor has oversight, uh, over, but, um, the audit really is kind of a year-round effort, uh, anymore. And so, uh, we're not very far away from, uh, starting that process up again.
House left.
All righty. I will, we'll move forward to what we come up with now.
Yeah, and at this point, I haven't received any guidance from the state auditor's office. Typically, we would advertise the RFP. Um, the last time we did this, four years ago, our financial advisory board was the committee that evaluated those proposals, and we had to have a recommendation in by May 15th. I don't know if, given the current COVID-19 situation, if there's going to be extensions on those deadlines. Um, it could be difficult for an audit firm to respond to our solicitation if, if people aren't working in the office. So I'm going to kind of try to get more information on that in the next week or so, before we go through the process to advertise that.
All right. Thank you. Good job, Michael, and, and Kathy, please tell Sandy and Dan, please let Geneva know. We appreciate their hard effort.
Definitely, no.
Thank you. All right. Item C, deliberate an act on resolution 2020-16, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year 19 audits for the city of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service.
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, this would be, uh, a requirement to, uh, really wrap up the process, uh, that we have just discussed in the report, uh, that you have just heard. Um, and so we have placed the resolution in the packet for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-16, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year 19 audits for the city of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service.
We have a motion and a second to accept, to adopt resolution number 2020-16, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year 19 audits. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion from both out in the audit?
Not at this point, no.
All righty, thank you. Michael, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You bet, Frank. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You bet. Be sure to look you back at your door, and we'll talk to you again.
All right.
Okay. Frank, Barry?
House left.
Okay. Item D, deliberate an act on proposal, MOU, between the city of Raton and the Center for Community Innovation for Tourism Coordinator. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor Protim, uh, Mayor Commission, as reported by the Mayor Protim, the Raton Chamber has informed us that, uh, uh, come March 31st, uh, they will really go into, uh, hibernation. And so any services that, any agreement that we had with the Chamber, uh, then would cease. And they, we, we've talked about this for a while. Uh, the Chamber has continued up until this point, but, uh, March 31st would really be the end of our agreement, the termination of our agreement, uh, with that not-for-profit group. Uh, so among, uh, things that we have, uh, contracted with the Chamber for in the past is really oversight of operations of our Visitors Information Center. And I really want to thank the Chamber for, uh, their years of service at the, at the Tourist Information Center, the Visitors Information Center, um, at a time when the state tourism really just walked out the door for a number of years. Uh, the Chamber has done an excellent job of, of maintaining that center, uh, providing services to our visitors, and, uh, keeping that going. And, and now we're just kind of in the evolution of the operation there. Um, with the city hiring Ms. Barfield as Economic Development Director, Jessica has, uh, put her office in the Visitors Information Center and also done a great job as far as, uh, the operations there. Uh, what I bring to you tonight is a proposal from the Center for Community Innovation, uh, for, uh, partnership and not only operations at the center, um, but, uh, really in broader sense, the, the tourism and, uh, visitors' coordination and activities. So you see a proposal in your packet from the Center for Community Innovation. I have drafted a memorandum of, uh, uh, understanding for your consideration. And what the, the Center is asking for is the same, uh, appropriation of lodgers' tax funds that the commission had previously agreed to, uh, with the Chamber. Now, our present agreement with the Chamber would have run to the end of the fiscal year, so we're a little short of that. We had budgeted that amount. That amount is $2,500 per month, adds up to $30,000 a year, which has been used, uh, primarily for salaries of, uh, several staff members at the Center. Uh, the Chamber is, uh, uh, proposing the same sort of a deal, the same dollars, and actually the same staff to continue on, uh, at the Center. So I bring this to you for your consideration. Due to the structure of our meeting tonight, um, how you get information to questions that you might have, uh, we can do that however you want to. I would tell you, there's not a hurry on this, but the, uh, the agreement to fund these positions would expire at the end of March. And don't feel like that's rushing the commission. We want you to feel like you have all the information. However, Jessica Barfield, uh, is really, uh, engaged with the Center, knowledgeable about their, uh, their proposal, and, uh, works directly with the staff at the Center, as well as the volunteers. So Ms. Barfield is here to, uh, add any information that I may have glossed over, answered questions. I think we have a very knowledgeable person, uh, present here. And, uh, Mayor, with that, we'll, uh, answer any questions that the commission may have.
Hey, thank you.
Mayor, may I just note that although I've reported, there was no official board meeting with the Center for Community Innovation. There have been several emails, so the board members are aware of this proposal and in agreement.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm kind of excited to see this proposal because, um, we've had really strong management at the Visitors Information Center, but it's never truly aligned with our marketing. And so, um, one of the really great things I see coming out of my officeing there and us having, um, local people, like Patricia at the Center, working on those marketing pieces, um, we're able to collaborate and really come up with ideas that work to really promote Raton and not just provide people with whatever free material we get. And so, um, I see this as something that can be very positive for everyone. Um, since, since I've been officeing at the VIC, I've kind of been, um, assisting Caleb with operations, talking to volunteers, getting to know how the Chamber ran the Visitor Center, and they had a very strong and solid foundation of volunteers to keep those doors open. Um, and so we just don't want to see that stop. Um, Caleb is the person who is the closest to full-time there, that helps oversee our volunteers. And I will tell you, um, over the last month and a half, he's really stepped up and helped me a lot on the economic development front with research and, um, even some of the marketing things that we've needed to handle. So I'm pretty confident that by having Caleb and Penny Sue, the two that help, um, ensure the safety of the building and volunteers, uh, move over to the Center, I, I don't see it really changing the operations very much. I just see collaboration growing, so.
Any comments, questions for Jessica?
Um, I, right now, I have that right here. Um, I apologize. I was going to make, not make, Caleb was going to be here, but obviously, we have a little bit of a change in plans with the way this meeting rolled out. So, um, currently, we have a total of, I want to say it's around 25, but it could be a few, 27 volunteers. 66% have a regular shift every week, and the rest of them come in as needed. And so, um, and to be quite honest, some of those volunteers just come in because they want to spend time with us, which is pretty cool, too. Um, and so that's pretty strong.
I did go ahead and read the, uh, some previous copies of MOUs just to compare them, and it was very, very similar, and so I didn't have any problems with this particular MOU.
One thing that I did want to point out that is different in this MOU than has been in the past, and that is the creation of the Visitors Guide, Visitors Information Guide. Um, you know, that's something that we actually started. I think we're going to put a pin in until some of this craziness, um, you know, calms down and our businesses get to recover and things, um, and we see how tourism is going to shake out for the year. But there is something in here that says we will put that Visitors Guide together, or the Center will, kind of as part of the team. And any money off of that will go to fund the operations of the, the Center, because right now, the 30,000 that you give is enough to cover Caleb's salary and part of Penny's, not all of Penny's. And so one of the things that we're doing is finding ways to fill that gap. Um, and this would be one way of doing that, so.
All right. Any other comments? I was going to say the same thing in the MOU, pretty much look what we've been used to seeing. Uh, I've been down to the Center a couple of times, and, uh, likewise, too. I have to comment on, I believe you had Caleb redo the Chamber, uh, site?
Yeah.
Impressive.
He's a very, he's very good at digital media and building websites and doing some of the things that, um, he has a really strong skill set that wasn't really utilized in the past that I'm tapping into. And so I think that, um, he's going to be a really great member of the team, and I think by putting him with Jeff and Patricia, it'll just allow him to grow more. Um, I've also been having him sit in on some of my economic development calls, so he understands the big picture and, and gets a little bit of that education, too.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the city of Raton and the Center for Community Innovation for Tourism Coordinator. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the MOU between the city of Raton and the Center for Community Innovation for the Tourism Coordinator. Is there any further discussion? Michael, a reverend roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Motion there. Item E, deliberate an act on lodger's tax non-promo fund request to cover expenses for Visitor Information Center rebranding and marketing materials. And since I see Jessica right there, I guess we'll go right in.
It's kind of a continuation. And, uh, once again, sorry Caleb couldn't be here. He did put together this presentation for you, and I'm just going to talk very briefly instead of going really in-depth. But you can see our visitor's numbers by years. He put a graph together and talked a little bit about, um, you know, our volunteers there. And some of the things that we want to do moving forward, one of the things that we've already done at the Visitors Information Center is we created a partnership with the Raton Arts Council. And what we're doing is now we're going to have a local artist of the quarter, so every three months, we'll have a new display by, by a local artist. We started, the very first one is Carl Swanson, and now we're going to put a call out, and we're going to do a lottery system, um, based upon local artists who want to have their items there. Anything that gets sold there through Raton Arts Council, we get the commission back donated towards, um, the Information Center, towards our operations. And so that's a really nice, um, thing, partnership to have. That's already up and ready. Um, but there's some things that we want to do. I just talked to you a little bit about the 30,000 being enough for one person, really to help us oversee some of these, um, volunteers, but still having a gap in what we really need to provide. And so there's a couple of different things that I've challenged Caleb and Patricia to work together on from a marketing standpoint and advertising standpoint. And we've created, um, packages. We're going to go out to the ski resorts in the area and actually do some paid advertising. We're going to go out to, um, the hot springs and the casinos, as well as possibly Santa Fe and Taos for arts and culture. So we're going to put little kiosks about the most asked destinations in the state, um, and we're actually going to go out and get those people to pay for some of that real estate. We've talked to a couple of companies that are absolutely open to that. It's not going to be huge. I'm hoping for about 2,000 a year from each of them, and that would be enough to bring in some passive income for operations there. Um, but in order to do that kind of stuff, we need a little bit of money for what I'm calling a rebrand and refresh. So, um, along with having some shared space there for our local organizations to operate, we've put together a little lounge area. We are going to continue to provide free coffee, but we're coming to you with an ask of $5,000 today for some very specific things. Number one is two vending machines. I know that sounds really silly, but we've talked about volunteers not really being able to handle cash, and we've talked about, um, some of the different items that go along with that. And so what I would like to do is purchase two vending machines that will belong to the city, be at the Information Center, and it will be something that is stocked by Caleb, and all of those proceeds will go into this fund that we're creating for operational costs. That'll be a one-time purchase that we can maintain. If it's something that takes off and goes well, hopefully, we can do one at the train center down the road if this is, works for our travelers. Um, so in addition to those vending machines, I'm asking for some money to buy vinyl. I know that sounds strange, but you can put vinyl on walls, you can put vinyl on windows, and you can reuse it. One of the things that we've had in the past is one nice presentation that's never changed. And so I challenged Caleb and Patricia to come up with something that'll change every quarter. We're going to have a different display for fall. We're going to have a different display for summer and winter that are going to be removable and reusable. Um, but we have to make that one-time purchase so that we have those. We're going to make sure they're Raton branded. Um, and then last but definitely not least, what I think is the most important piece of the puzzle to making this Information Center work for Raton is providing information about Raton. So I, one of the first things I did with Caleb is said, bring everything we have that talks about our town to me. And when we looked through it, we realized what we have are what organizations have provided us for free, and, and different things have been put, put together out of necessity over the years, but they weren't branded, and it wasn't really what we were trying to get across to our visitors. And so, um, we've created 10 rack cards, as well as some window clings and posters to offer to hotels, because that is one thing we hear all the time from the Lodger's Tax Board, is we need something in our hotels. Um, and we also need to provide a stock of just these cards about Raton, including a map of Sugar Reed. We have a map of the city of Raton being created with all of our landmarks. That's what people are looking for, and we don't have it. Um, and so I want to be able to fill those needs. So any money that is left over after we buy the vinyl and vending machines, I would request to go into a printing budget so that we can be prepared for whenever our tourism picks back up and people start coming this way. Um, I recognize the timing is probably not fantastic, but with the Center closed, we can make all these changes before we reopen, um, if this gets approved. And so that was, uh, something I wanted to move ahead with, and I appreciate your consideration.
Any questions?
Perhaps I'm ignorant, but did you explain the vinyl?
Absolutely. Um, I'm looking at Lori. How can we describe? That's not really, that's not what I'm talking about. Think about a window cling. Window clings that stick to walls that you can peel. Window clings that stick to walls that you can peel off and reuse, because at the information center, one of the things we have are these big wooden centerpieces that have a window in the middle.
Right.
Well, you can't really see through it because they're really old, it's kind of a plexiglass, and so, instead, we're gonna get vinyl that fits that exact size and presses on there, so we can press it on there and it'll look nice, and whenever it's time to change it, it'll be something we can do pretty easily.
Very good, thank you.
Of course, no, I know, it's, it's, we're just trying to get creative because that adds a very professional, modern look without spending a lot of money, and we have three different people in town that make vinyl, and so, that's kind of really cool, we can source that here and get it fairly cheaply.
Any other comments, questions? Is $5,000 enough?
$5,000 enough is enough for now, I'm gonna say the vending machines is a big investment, but I see that as a long-term investment, and then the rest of this, I'm gonna end up asking long-term from Lodger's Tax Board for a print budget in the future. This is enough to stock us up right now and probably last us for a year, but what I would like to do in the future is go to Lodger's Tax and say, I'd like $1,000 a quarter to print maps and some of these information cards for visitors, and to provide those out to the hotels, because that's what we've been asked for a lot, and so, I want to make sure that we provide that. So, it is, it's cutting it close, but I wanted to be realistic and get a good, solid foundation, I think that'll work, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to cover expenses for the Visitor Information Center for the rebranding and marking materials of $5,000 from, I'm assuming it listed the non-promotional budget, but, right over.
Yes, and we'll get to that, I guess, when we get to the budget adjustment, so, just anticipating approval this evening, I am putting an additional $5,000 in our non-promo fund line item.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the request to cover the rebranding and marking materials for the Visitor Center, is there any further discussion? Michael Land, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Jessica. Item F, deliberate enact on memorandum of understanding between the City of Rattone and Grow Rattone for office space at the Visitor Center, excuse me, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, I, myself and Jessica have had contact with the board members of Grow Rattone, specifically Kathy Harris, who is the president of Grow Rattone currently, to get an update about their activities, and just to summarize where we're at with you, Grow Rattone did obtain a grant recently in the amount of $15,000, I believe that came from the New Mexico Gas Company, which they would use to replace Patricia, who had moved over to the center for paid staff, so I think they're looking for the right person right now, and they have requested that we provide them a space for office operations at the Visitors' Information Center. So, I think that, number one, that would be a requirement really of accepting the grant, is that they have a place of business, you'll recall that they were located in the El Rattone Building for the past few years, but I think that they are out of the El Rattone Building now, and so, in our conversation, we did bring this to the commission for your consideration, you have a memorandum of understanding in your packet that has been put together by Grow Rattone, it really is the MOU that we have talked about before with the Chamber for occupation there, so you see a lot of the similar terms in there. Generally, what it boils down to is, we would provide office space, they would use the office space and not incur any of the expenses that go along with the operation of the building, whether it's utilities, landscaping, upkeep of the building, that kind of thing, and then, they would then yield economic development services to the community, and so, this is something that Grow Rattone has done for over 10 years, and they seek to continue on. Jessica has had a lot of conversation, interaction with them, she can probably provide additional information, but it is a very similar MOU, maybe overlapping in a way with the center. Generally, in my conversation with not-for-profits that are involved in tourism or in economic development is, we've generally said, we'll extend this offer to you, and I think the other entity that we have done that for is the Chamber, which now, as we've said, will go dark for a period of time.
If you don't mind, I would just like to add one more comment for some history on this, so that you understand how this came about. The Chamber, Grow Rattone and the Center has, have been meeting for a while as all of these changes have become, with me moving to the city and a bunch of different things happening locally, and it became really obvious to us that we needed a shared space, because then we can communicate about what we're doing, we could really be in touch with what each other are doing instead of competing, that would be really great, and working together. And so, that front office, right behind the front desk there, is very long, and there's two different seats, and our thought is for that to be for Grow Rattone and hopefully the Chamber, once we round up some new board members, to share that space, they're with us, and of course, the Center has a presence with Caleb, that's part of why we created a little lounge area with additional places to plug in and do work, in case we get a little bit full, but right now, I see it as a way to build a partnership and communicate amongst each other easier, as well as cutting some of the expenses of rent that grant money has been paying for, if we can kind of scale down and all get together, I think it can save each organization on expenses, so, that's kind of the background and history on that.
And Mayor and Commissioner, that's the advantage that I see here, is coordination between the primary parties that are working on economic development, they'll all be located there, working together on a daily basis.
Yeah, I guess, my comments and concerns were, prior to them receiving this grant, we had been informed that Grow Rattone was basically, had accomplished their goals and was disbanding. I guess I have a little concern as to not necessarily knowing what it is they're gonna do for us now, you know? I just gotta throw that out there, because they got this grant, now they say, oh, well, let's hire somebody, but what are you gonna do? And we're gonna give you all of this space, an office space with no cost, basically, to you, what are we getting in return?
I, sorry, go ahead Lori. I was gonna say, I completely understand, it is underutilized office space at this point in time, I've talked to Kathy Harris, she and David don't want to give up yet, they feel that this RCAC still has some room to grow, and they still have the ability to utilize those resources in our community, so right now, they don't have a full-time staff, they are looking to get one, and so, this is kind of an olive branch, you know, to make sure that they have a place to call home while they do that. So, they are still talking with Jeff at the Center, in fact, they're looking at bringing a consultant in to really look at planning what it looks like for both of those organizations in the future, and what it will look like when we get the Chamber back at the table, to make sure that we're providing services well. So, it is a little early, there is a lot of change right now, but it's part of the process, so.
I just had a suggestion, this MOU repeats a lot of the language that we've already agreed to with a different entity now at the Center, and the way that we run the Schuler is the Schuler Restoration Committee then subcontracts or talks and works out who's ever using the Schuler, and I would suggest that instead of this MOU being a separate MOU with the City Commission, that perhaps, now that the Center has the MOU for the Visitor Center, that then they would discuss the terms of someone using that office space, since they're now in charge of it, so we're not making, you know, this, we're maintaining landscaping for Grow Rattone, we're maintaining landscaping for the Center, it's just kind of repeating things that were already negotiated, I guess you would say.
Sounds like a possibility, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, I believe that we have established a workable model with the Schuler Theater where you have, you know, a number of things going on there, that's worked pretty well there, and I think that that could certainly work here. That really strengthens this notion that we'll all coordinate our activities and work together, and of course, we, we had a lot of, a big challenge in front of us as far as economic development, I think the challenge is even greater today, so, plenty of work to do, plenty of responsibilities to pass along, but that idea could certainly, I think, strengthen this coordination concept.
I kind of like that concept myself. So, I would, I would suggest possibly postponing this, or not acting this, or taking this, maybe Mr. Berry, taking the suggestion to the Center and seeing what, and then Grow Rattone, see where we can go from.
Mayor, Commissioner, with your direction, I will do some additional work on this, and we, I think what would make sense is maybe to bring an addendum to the commission to allow that under the MOU that we earlier considered with the Center, and put some provisions for that coordination with the city in there, so I think that's workable. With your direction, I will go forward and try to bring back an addendum for our next meeting or so.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we can move to approve the City Manager for creating that addendum.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve an addendum.
To the Center.
To the Center's MOU, is there any further discussion on that? Michael Land, that's who you are, yes, can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes, and we still have to address item F, what are we gonna do there? Postpone, table?
Table, I'll make a motion to table, item F, deliberate enact on memorandum of understanding between the City of Rattone and Grow Rattone for office space at the Visitor Center, a second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to table the MOU between the City of Rattone and Grow Rattone for office space at the Visitor Center, is there any further discussion? Michael Land, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to item G, discussion on Chamber of Commerce billboard contract with Linmark, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, earlier, the Rattone Chamber of Commerce had executed an agreement with Linmark for a billboard that is located on U.S. Highway 6487 in the area of Capulin. Now, we've placed a photo of the billboard in your packet for your consideration, and you also see that, a copy of that contract with Linmark in your packet, and then, you have this sheet, which is a request of the commission, but I realize now that there's not a name on that sheet, and so, I would tell the commission that that request came from the Chamber Board, was submitted to myself and the city clerk, and it states in brief, I am proposing that the city take over the monthly payment of $315 plus tax for this Chamber billboard for the remainder of the agreement, which according to the information that we have, ends in May of 2021. So, that would be the proposal of the Chamber, is to assume the position of the Chamber in this contract for a year plus, and then you also see some information regarding changing of the vinyl on the billboard. So, I have brought this to the commission for your consideration and your direction, you'll note from the agenda that we do not have an action item on this, because we have actually not had a chance to discuss this directly with Linmark, and we would like to get your direction tonight as to how to proceed with this item, if you so direct us, we would bring this back for action at a subsequent commission meeting.
Is there any questions from Mr. Berry, who are not going to be taking any action, but informational questions? Can you explain to us the three-year contract, the vinyl is free?
I really do not have a explanation for that, Commissioner, but we will ask that question of Linmark, but, and I assume that they would say, if we would agree to extend this existing contract, which is for a little more than a year, to three years, that they would provide new vinyl at no additional cost, and so, if that's something that the commission would like to entertain, we can bring back a proposal from Linmark for that, I think that I would turn to the city clerk and look at some procurement items on this, but we are here to get the direction of the commission, and then, if the commission would like to look at that as an option, or changing the vinyl for a one-year period or a two-year period, we will certainly pursue that and find a way to bring that back to the commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I feel that this is a great billboard to have, and if the city, you know, if the Chamber is unable to maintain that billboard now, I think it's something we should look into, the contract with Linmark, and see what, you know, I'm sure this is the terms that they had with the Chamber, and so, we can find out what contract terms they would have with the city for the vinyl or whatever, I'd be curious to see what they would offer.
Yeah.
It's a great location.
It is a good billboard.
It is a good billboard.
I do have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Chatterley, we talked, you and I talked before, when we were talking about, and I'm a proponent of not having billboards pass Capulin, like in Dalhart or Texas, coming in Rattone, and this is the next one, we'll start right there.
It's, I may be wrong, but it was my understanding that this billboard and the cost of this billboard was under the contract we had with the Chamber, under the amount of money that we were giving them, that they, that it was not an additional, no?
Mayor, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tim, I would say that the previous MOU really covered salaries, of course, at one time, we had the cost of a professional cleaning service and mowing in there, and you remember, the Chamber said, we don't have enough money to do all of that, so I believe that they would tell you that this was paid for out of member dues.
Member dues, I see.
And that will also go dark, is my understanding.
Right, because it, I mean, it is directly related to the Visitor Center, so.
I think it could be rebranded with the new brand and still direct people, I think it's one thing I, if we're gonna have a billboard close proximity, it should give people a reason to stop, and I think what they highlighted, you know, with the restrooms and free coffee, free Wi-Fi, that gives people a reason to stop.
Right, I like, personally, I like the billboard, is, and it says snacks, oh, we're gonna have snacks if you put that. $3,600 a year plus some change, basically, we're looking at.
That's correct, Mayor.
What are we, what are our other contracts? Just, if you know, rub it.
Well, I believe the 300, what did we say, 315 is fairly standard with what we had before, but that was with Lamar.
It was actually a little bit cheaper than a lot of the Lamar billboards, but it was also smaller, so it's hard to compare, but the location's a lot better than what we had, or we had with Lamar after we walked, so, it seems reasonable.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we look forward to hearing from you.
So, Mayor, Commissioner, what I'm hearing is, you'd like me to bring back a proposal for maybe rebranding the billboard and maybe from one year to three years, would the commission entertain that proposal?
Get their free vinyl, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Okay. We'll work on this, and of course, now, there's not, I think that up till now, the billboard has been paid for, but we'll run into that period where Linmark will want to be paid to continue on, and so, we'll probably move this forward very quickly and bring it right back to the commission.
So, the one, Commissioner, I'll just direct you to get after it.
One more question, will, will the vinyl stay the same for, because it does say the Chamber of Commerce.
We would look for direction on that, however, I would say that we have some talented We would look for direction on that, however, I would say that we have some talented people in the design area. Commissioner Chatterley had stated that she'd probably like to see some rebranding to the Raton brand. We'll take your input as far as that goes.
Is this just a question, is it something that would have to come before the lodger's tax board first, and perhaps through the media person? I mean, that's usually how we've done all the advertising, is it goes through, the center has the contract for media management, and then the lodger's tax board usually approves that. That's how we do it. Right? We haven't had a meeting of the lodger's tax board in a while, I believe that's timing is lodgers here, right?
Just an update on lodger's tax board, we have three members out of the five, three sheets are filled. We would look to appoint two additional members due to recent resignations of two members, and so, if we have, if we can coordinate around everyone, then we can have a meeting. Now, I would also state to the commission that the secretary of our board, the coordinator of our board, Robin Osborne, her last day at the city is today also, so, we're a little shorthanded from that perspective. So, it's not that we can't have a meeting of lodger's tax board, it's, there's some challenges there, however, I think it's really at the direction of the commission. Now, typically, promotional funds, we would, we would either seek approval of the lodger's tax board, or their recommendation to the commission. Non-promotional generally would deal with more of the bricks and mortar type of facilities and maybe not go that route, however, how we are paying for this would be an additional question.
I think the other billboards are through promotional funds, and I understand if there's not a lodger's tax board, if they can't get a forum to meet, then obviously it has to come directly to us, especially if it's timely.
Michael Ann, I don't know if you could maybe give us your thoughts on where we're at on lodger's tax board as far as convening a meeting?
Well, we're currently soliciting some applications. I've talked to one lodger that potentially is interested, so if I can get that on the agenda for the next commission meeting, which we said was gonna be April 10th, then the lodger's tax board would convene that same week on that Thursday. So, I mean, we do still have three members in place, but if one can't make it, then we don't have a quorum. So, if we could at least appoint a fourth member, that would help, and then potentially try to get that fifth position filled. So, one of the vacancies that we have, the individual that vacated the board was the at-large position, so obviously, that one's a little bit easier to fill.
And Mayor, Commission, I would state that there was some residual funds with the chamber and the board members, that the outgoing board members we've talked to, I don't know that they wouldn't be able to cover that period, maybe for the period of April, and Linmark would be happy, we'll discuss the situation with Linmark, and I think there's some leeway with Linmark as well, as far as us representing a good faith that we, you know, have an intent to go forward with this. So, I think we have some leeway to, you know, work around the challenges that we have, and then bring this back to the commission in a way that you would like to see.
And I think there's a difference, when a contract is expiring, they usually try to reach out to us probably 60 to 90 days before expiration, and so, you kind of have some milestones that you need to secure that billboard, or else when it gets closer to the expiration, they could sell it to somebody else if you haven't made a commitment. So, at least, I mean, I think this is locked in through May of 2021, but like the city manager said, the payment of it, I think Linmark would work with us on that.
Yeah.
So, I don't think it's in jeopardy that we would lose it, just due to the contract term being through May of 2021. So, I think that gives us some time to work with Linmark. So, I'll reach out to the individual that's listed on this contract, I believe his name was Trent.
Trent Linmark.
Roy DeRosa.
Roy, yeah. So, we'll bring something back to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Item H, deliberate an act on engineering contract between the city of Raton and Engineering Analytics for CDBG downtown infrastructure project.
Mayor, Commission, we've got a number of, a couple of items that are infrastructure-related. I've asked Jason Phillips, our public works director, to address the commission tonight in regard to the next several items. Jason has put a lot of time into moving along all of these projects that we're gonna talk about here, now, beginning with the CDBG downtown infrastructure project. Now, one comment that I would make on this is that Raton did have a visit from representatives of Department of Finance Administration, the local government division. Three of those representatives came to Raton and met with myself, Jason, and our city clerk, Michael Ann Antinucci, and I can tell you that they really had unprecedented compliments for Raton as far as how we've put together our CDBG project so far, and I can tell you that even though there's no work going on, a lot of work has gone into the CDBG project, but also for the city's management of capital outlay over the last several years. So, they were very complimentary, and that is really due to the work of Jason Phillips and Michael Ann Antinucci, and so, once again, you know, we would acknowledge, we have really a strong team here and a great staff for these type of things, but Mayor, I would turn this over to Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Mayor, Commission, beginning with item H, is the proposed engineering contract for the CDBG project. You can see it's broke down into two separate portions, that's similar with the RFP. To kind of analyze where the process, we were at, we had a competitive-based qualifications proposal process. We came to you two meetings ago to identify that the most qualified firm selected by the evaluation committee was Engineering Analytics. The next step in that process is to come to an agreement on costs. So, you have a proposal in front of you, broke down into two parts, forty-seven thousand four hundred for the bid phase and for, or the building phase, forty-four thousand six hundred for design. Total value of the contract is ninety-two thousand plus New Mexico growth receipts tax. That amount is in line with what we've seen engineering projects go for, especially a federal project that requires a lot more oversight and management by an engineering firm. This process would include labor enforcement interviews and wage compliance type issues, as well as meetings that are generally above and beyond what state level or local level monies entail, and it is within the allowable budget. When we submitted our CDBG grant agreement, we have more than the amount earmarked for engineering that they're requesting. I've vetted the proposal pretty thoroughly and think that it is a fair proposal and would recommend approval of it. I would ask if we do make a motion to approve this, that we do include the wording that would be contingent upon DFA concurrents, as that would be the next step in the CDBG process, is getting funding agency concurrents with this process.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Phillips?
I make a motion to approve the engineering contract between the city of Raton and Engineering Analytics for CDBG downtown infrastructure project contingent upon DFA concurrents.
A motion and a second to accept the contract with the contingency that DFA concurrents. Is there any further discussion?
Jason, can you repeat that project cost? It was ninety-two thousand?
Ninety-two thousand plus New Mexico growth receipts tax.
Any other discussion? Michael Ann, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes. Item I, I'm assuming Mr. Phillips is gonna handle this one as well. Deliberate an act on Great Blocks Task Board for Engineering Analytics on Call Contract.
Mayor, Commission, before you, you have a task order that is, a task order that would reflect a proposal relating to our on-call engineering contract, not a request for proposal situation. Engineering Analytics has the on-call engineering contract. You have a for your proposal for eighty thousand six hundred dollars plus New Mexico growth receipts tax for what we would be calling Phase Two slash Three of Great Blocks on Main Street. The total project value of this is eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand plus the city's match. Generally, on an engineering-type proposal, you'd expect the curve to be relatively high, 10% or greater for construction and inspection. This proposal falls well under that. It's kind of a twofold reason, the first being that Phase One accomplished many of the design goals of this project. Phase Two involves repackaging this in the new phase to match the current money and complete the project, and it also involves a large amount of construction inspection, and we learned from Phase One of Great Blocks, that's something that we definitely need, especially in light of the fact that the CDBG project and Great Blocks could be going simultaneously. It's gonna be difficult for Mr. Berry and I to see these projects daily as we'd like to. I think it's a fair proposal. It does include a sub-agreement with our original design consultants on Great Blocks, they'll be on board for the submittal process and deal with any design issues that may pop up. The first phase of this project went amazingly well, I thought, with design team that was in place, and we would be basically bringing that same design team forth for Phase Two.
Mr. Berry, any comments?
I would say that we were using the same team that we've used in the previous phases, so, we're using all the previous design. I would state the strength of the partnership here with New Mexico Main Street and Raton Main Street has really brought this to fruition. As you know, we've, we've talked about this project for about five years now, and we anticipate completing the first Great Blocks project in New Mexico here, so, I think that's also very important for New Mexico Main Street, and they again have the trust in Raton to be able to manage a project of this scope, and we have a good local team here, but as Jason said, a lot of, a lot of time spent during the construction phase. Now, Engineering Analytics really did a great job at, at that portion of it previously. We'll go forward with the bid, we'll try to bring the bid to the commission for your consideration, and get into construction as we get into the warmer months. I would tell you that there has been a lot of capital outlay out there, fewer contractors bidding on these things. We typically would look at contractors throughout the region that might look at this, and it depends on what their schedule looks like as far as bids that we get. We would like to get, you know, have a real competitive process and have a lot of bids, and sometimes because of our remoteness from Albuquerque, you know, we hope to get a couple, two or three bids, and so, we'll see how that goes, but upon your consideration of this, we will move that process forward and try to get to that next step.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Berry or for Mr. Phillips?
I will move to approve the Great Blocks Task Board for Engineering Analytics on Call Contract.
A motion and a second to approve the task order for Engineering Analytics on Call Contract? Is there any further discussion?
Sorry.
Yeah, we got me. It's contagious. Michael Ann, can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item J, he's, he's standing there, I see that, so, deliberate an act on Gordon Environmental Proposal for 2020 Environmental Monitoring Reporting Services. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, this is related to the closure phase of our landfill in which we have a 30-year period that we are required to monitor groundwater, monitor for methane emissions, repair anything that needs repair, such as erosion on the landfill, and we're a few years into that 30-year period. So, for, with that, I will let Jason talk about the proposal from Gordon Environmental. They are Park Hill Smith Cooper Gordon Environmental, if you see that on the, on some of the proposal information.
Mayor, Commission, as Mr. Berry stated, this is part of our post-closure 30-year period requirement. Gordon has done work for the city for a number of years in this regard. In 2018, the cost for this proposal was twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars. In 2019, the similar groundwater proposal was thirty-three thousand five hundred, and we stand here today with the proposal for twenty-eight thousand nine hundred. The reduction in price isn't a reflection of any savings, and certain number of years, you have an expanded constituent list that you have to test against. Last year was a year that we had to test for the extended parameters, so the net result was a higher cost last year. Reflecting the similar list, it would be more like the 2018 figure of the twenty-five thousand four hundred, but as our luck would hold, nothing seems to go down in price in this world. So, this is a rather costly proposal for the city of Raton to deal with, but it's a firm that knows us well, it's important to retain environmental compliance, they've done an acceptable job in the past with the tasks that we've asked them for, so I would recommend approval of this proposal for twenty-eight thousand nine hundred plus New Mexico growth receipts tax.
So, move, I make a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proposal from Gordon Environmental for 2020 Environmental Monitoring Reporting Services. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Mayor Sagada.
Yes. Item K, deliberate an act on mechanical engineering services for Convention Center Heating System. Mr. Berry, please.
Mayor, Commission, I have asked Jason Phillips to bring this proposal to you. This is in regard to mechanical services at the Convention Center. We have had known mechanical issues at the Convention Center for a while. We have made plans to work on some smaller pieces of that, but because of boiler issues that have occurred recently, we really are contemplating repackaging this into one larger project, primarily concerning the upgrade of mechanical systems, and so, Jason will give you the details on that. He has talked to a mechanical engineer who has put together this cost proposal for your consideration.
Mayor, Commission, whenever doing an evaluation on a proposal like this or a facility, you know, we try hard to separate wants from needs. Last year at this time, it was a want to improve the Convention Center heating system. At this time, it is clearly a need. Our boiler system has done nothing short of failed. We have a system that's rather old, and it is at a point where it's leaking, and the system would probably cost six thousand dollars in parts plus additional labor to repair it, to bring our vintage 1990s boiler back into a functional state. What we found when we've, when we've looked at this boiler is 30-year-old piping and pumps that are associated with this system. We have brought in high-tech E&amp;D to take a look at our system, do an evaluation. We had done that through just a basic purchase order. She analyzed four different sets of construction drawings that are related to the renovation of the Convention Center, subsequent additions and remodels, and it's a rather daunting task to even get a handle on what this system is. Little backdrop on the system, at one time, heat was generated from the Raton Power Plant pump through the Convention Center, resulted in great cost savings to heat the building, but it also resulted in kind of a Frankenstein arrangement of plumbing and piping, which is now 30 years old, and it's just time to bring it all up to snuff. And it's just time to bring it all up to snuff rather than do a simple boiler replacement, kick this down the road five years. It's time to attack this with a little more zest. This proposal will provide a design to replace valves, piping, large-scale piping. And also preliminary design looks like our single one million BTU boiler may be replaced with two boilers that operate in a more efficient manner, provide redundancy of operation. And net result would be that we would expect lower operating costs going forward with the expenditure of capital funds. That's kind of how we like to spend our money. Spend our money now, pay less later. In addition, we have what would anticipate be a Phase Two for even further needs in the system leaving the mechanical room. There's a number of heat coils and other fan-type issues and opening valves that have failed. To be honest with you, right now at the convention center, it's either hot or cold and nothing in between. We're running all the way out. And, you know, it burns gas. You know, one of the few utilities that we don't own that has a direct cost to this department. And Ms. Baca has been well-vetted. She's done work for the city of Raton and done a heating system renovation at the senior center, which we've looked at and seems to be working well. We kind of probed the depth of her knowledge in the system. I don't think this project overwhelms her, and I think we feel confident. She's got some local design elements. Gentleman doing the electrical work is a sub-consultant on our transfer station. Mr. Dave Little would be doing some construction inspection and preparing the bid documents. He's familiar with our process. And in today's world, thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars plus New Mexico gross receipts tax seems like a pretty fair price for this type of work that we're looking at.
Now, Mayor and Commission, I would just add to that that I don't know what construction cost might look like. I would caution the commission that this could be a hundred thousand dollar project plus. We don't really have a good estimate on that. But we know that at a minimum, we need to replace this boiler. And of course, you know, we've talked about renovation of restrooms, some modernization of this. The pumps, replacement of the pumps is something that we've had a concern with for several years. So while I say the boiler is a minimum, I would really encourage you to think about a larger project. And it really fits in with our discussion of what are we going to do with non-promotional lodgers tax, which in past years has gone to debt service. We're not servicing debt currently. That is something that we could finance down the road. We have had, I think, a good strategy of directly funding projects paid for with non-promotional lodgers tax that crop up as the highest priority. The commission did award a contract for about fifty thousand dollars of improvements at the Shooter Theater. And then this has come up as really our next highest priority. And we're probably looking at a pretty significant construction cost for this. So just to caution the commission on this. However, I think it's going to be necessary, and we're going to proceed and bring this forward to you. But this has emerged as really our, necessarily our top priority for non-promotional lodgers funding.
All right. Yeah, in dealing with Ms. Baca and past the project at the senior center, we're very happy with the results there. Our system was either on or off and completely realized that and very happy with the results.
I think we would look for some, you know, energy efficiency in this project, certainly. We look for some reliability and try to get something that we feel comfortable about for the next twenty-five or thirty years.
I think it became very evident during the Simroam fire, the need for those restroom renovations and adding in some showers to the downstairs based our downstairs restrooms possibly.
During the comprehensive plan meeting, it was extremely warm in there.
Right now, the thermostat is the front doors in the facility.
Too hot or too cold.
I make a motion to approve the kind of going to air and system to the convention center heating system. I have a motion and a second to approve the mechanical engineering services for the convention center heating system. Is there any further discussion? Michael Lang, grab a vote please.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Mayor Sagata.
Yes, thank you. Adam L., deliberate an act on Resolution 202017, to waive convenience fees on credit card utility payments and by telephone and spin disconnections during the COVID-19, excuse me, emergency. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commission, in the previous items, we had talked about infrastructure. And previously, I had told the commission, advised the commission that we have a lot of infrastructure items on the list. I'm not going to talk about that in the city manager's report because we now will turn our attention to the impact of the COVID-19 situation. So we have a number of things on the remainder of the agenda and the remainder of the meeting to talk about related to that. And so I think with the first one, we have discussed with the Raton Utilities in anticipation that businesses are going to struggle due to the closure. We're going to have residents of Raton struggling due to either having their hours of employment cut or all of their hours cut, just basically being unemployed. And so one thing we had talked about here is in regard to utilities. Now, I will tell you that Raton Water Works had met last night, and they have discussed this item. Raton Public Service Company will discuss this at their meeting tomorrow night. They both have resolutions discussing potential actions in that regard. Mr. Campbell is here tonight to summarize the discussion at Raton Water Works. I believe that Raton Public Service Company will follow a similar path tomorrow night.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is actually, is addressing the COVID-19 emergency. What this is actually put in place partly is also to help the public, whether it be commercial or residential. But the other side of that issue would be actually to address what we are doing for city employees also because both windows are closed. We're now absent an appointment that you actually make with us. We ask you use drop boxes, use credit methods, use the online method, or the window at RPS will be open. But with those in mind, what this actually says, it says wait, but actually what we would do is temporarily suspend the fee to the end of this emergency, which, of course, is declared by the state, a three percent fee to use a credit card or a debit card, which would actually have an impact because we would still have to pay that as utilities. It would actually be Raton Water Works paring their share. It would actually affect the city on their portion of trash and RPS on the electric bills. It also waives till the fifteenth the disconnect date, which would put it the fifteenth of the following month. Your bill that you would receive on the first, it would be all the way into the fifteenth of the following month and give the public and businesses many options as they can to try to handle this. This would be the step we'd do at this point. It also takes away, makes it easier since we don't have the access of walking inside on either places as we're limiting the contact now. And that's all I have. The Water Board did approve it. It's before this commission because it does affect your fees. And RPS will be considering it tomorrow evening.
I just had one question about the wording and the now there for being resolved paragraph. It discusses, it shall be in effect until the COVID-19 emergency quarantines are lifted. I didn't know if, instead of calling it emergency quarantines, I didn't know how important it is to be specific in that language with its public health orders. Or I didn't know in the wording of when it's going to expire.
Mayor and Commissioners, what if we replaced quarantines with restrictions?
How does the governor's office define it?
Yeah, that's my.
I think that's the way it should be worded.
I don't think they're calling it quarantines.
There's a declared emergency number.
Right.
And actually, this is the one pressed by the Water Board. But actually, what I think we would do is also would be when the COVID-19 emergency is lifted, meaning, you know, not only the health orders, but all the things that actually have got our windows closed and access closed to the public. So I think it would more be by the state when they would actually say this emergency has been lifted.
I'm looking at the most recent public health order. And I'm like, so you said there's a number in here? I'm not sure.
Oh, it's, are you referring to the executive order 2020-004?
Is that what it is?
Ours is just, that is our resolution number.
There is right there, since Executive Order 2020-004.
That's her declared state of emergency, executive order.
So I would assume for the duration of the declared emergency.
Right.
Because I'm assuming that's how long we will actually have our probably limited access to City Hall.
Public health emergency order is kind of their lingo. That's all, I just wanted to be clear because we want to have, we want to be as helpful as we can to the public. I think that's a great thing and for our businesses. We also have to be clear about.
Mayor and Commission, I believe that since there is a cost consideration here, it is brought to the commission for, and, you know, the RPS board will take action on it as well. So both utility boards plus the city commission would authorize the cost offset.
Which is obviously the most important part. So I think the question is, do we need to change that language?
Change just the quarantine.
Quarantines.
To maybe to order.
Emergency.
We could approve it with the idea that maybe Michael was able to find out.
Correct that.
Correct that verbiage.
Are we just saying until the emergency order is lifted?
Where I would go, or restrictions. I'd probably remove quarantines, but either restrictions or orders. What we want to see, Michael?
Dan?
I actually, the same thing would be the COVID-19 emergency when she lifts her order in the emergency, which will actually probably become evident when we're back to having been able to open City Hall again, essentially.
Right. Well, move to approve Resolution Number 2020-17.
With the changes?
With the change in the semantics.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 202017 with the approved amendments. Is there any further discussion? Michael, can I have a vote please?
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Sagata.
Thank you.
Item M, deliberate an act on Resolution 202018, creating a business micro loan emergency fund due to COVID-19. Mr. Barry?
Mayor and Commission, this is really my own personal observation. But I think that what we're seeing is, you know, when I was a lot younger, business in Raton was primarily local entrepreneurs, mom-and-pop type of businesses that operated, people that were on the chamber board or sat up here on the commission, that coached Little League that had kids in school. And then we saw the national retailer type of concept come in. You know, we saw Kmart and McDonald's and the Holiday Inn and businesses like that. And really, we saw a lot fewer of the mom-and-pop stores. But what we're seeing now is really the national retailers are leaving small towns. And we commonly hear that if you, the first qualification is, you have to have a minimum of fifty thousand population before we'll look at your town. And so I think we're really cycling back to opportunities for local entrepreneurs. And we identified that in our economic development plan. As a major part of the plan is to try to work with entrepreneurs, encourage entrepreneurs and support entrepreneurship. And I think that's being put to the test right now with the restrictions placed by the orders due to the COVID-19 spread. Now, we have not had this virus in our town so far. I don't know if we have a case in Raton or we ultimately don't see a case in Raton. But we have a real concern that these restrictions will make it difficult to go on for some of our locally-owned businesses. And so Jessica and myself have worked on that. We have talked to some of these local businesses. I can tell you that we've got some that are very worried about the effect, the impact. And of course, it depends on how long restrictions are in place, how long the travel season really is restricted. And I would tell you that many of our local businesses cannot sustain for very long with the restrictions that are in place. And so I think that our goal as, in regard to the city-led economic development efforts, have really shifted now to trying to support our local businesses. And I have set up some meetings for tomorrow with local businesses to see what we can do to coordinate resources for them. And we would largely look to federal resources or state resources to try to support these businesses, and that's going to be a struggle. And typically, what we see with those type of resources are, I know what you hear in the news. It's pretty easy. We're going to put these out there and you get the resources. But typically, they don't tell you about strings that are attached, you know, processes that you have to go through and time delays. And so we will try to work with them. We'll try to act as kind of a clearinghouse for resources that are available. The thing I would say tonight in regard to potentially displaced workers is you probably want to go to Workforce Solutions website and look at benefits for displaced workers and try to do that immediately. And again, we're looking at both the businesses and those workers who now are not working being able to survive this unforeseen event. So that's one thing, is trying to really work with our workforce as far as what benefits might be available to them out there. And I think they could immediately go to Workforce Solutions and try to work through those. And the way to do that is online. You're not going to be able to call them. You're not going to be able to talk to someone or contact them. We can't talk to them, and so the online option is the best. What we hear is that the federal government will consider a package, which hopefully by tomorrow will be agreed to and put in place. But you're really dealing with a political level that's way over all of us. And so we'll see how that goes. We'll try to follow that very closely. There are some programs through state government. They might apply to some of our businesses. Certainly, they're not going to cover some of our smaller businesses, though. And so we'll start meeting with them and talking about those. But one thing that we bring to the commission for your consideration is the possibility that the city of Raton could set aside some funds. And this is going to be a much smaller effort that would, could be available to qualified small businesses. And I think these are really the smallest businesses that we're going to deal with that may have really a lot of trouble navigating that federal process or state process. And we're talking small amounts. But I think that my concept would be funds that are very targeted as far as the type of businesses eligible for that and how the funds could be used. And I would tell the commission that we've put this together fairly quickly. We have put a resolution in your packet where we're asking for your direction as far as going forward. But we have not put this program together fully yet. So what the resolution would say is you would authorize the city manager to go forward in regard to really a legal review of this, bringing back qualifications to the commission, and really better defining this program. It's not something the city of Raton has done before, back to the revolving fund, loan, fund days. And this is really significantly different than that. I don't know that other New Mexico municipalities have got this far out in front of this and are offering programs like this. So we really have some due diligence to do before we're ready to go. With the resolution, we're simply asking for direction from the city commission tonight. Is this something that you want to consider? You want us to move forward on? You want us to bring back additional information and work to the commission? And then, of course, I want to get your guidance and your direction on this. And so I will then, Mayor, hold up and, and try to answer any questions that you've got. But this is really a brand-new program that we're kind of brainstorming as we go. I can tell you that we have businesses that are really in some distress right now, today. And we probably can't act soon enough on this. Of course, we anticipate bringing something back to the next meeting if that's the commission's direction. We've got some work to do, but we do have the need right now, today. Now, Jessica's here also. She has interfaced with a number of businesses who have brought to our attention that their costs go on while their revenues really either decline significantly or go to zero. And so this is a, this is an emergency situation, truly. Now, our city clerk has also advised us that there's some risk with this consideration. There are not guarantees. My concept is we would really fight for these, these locally owned businesses that are so hard to develop. And I would advise the commission that at this point where we're at, you're going to be dealing with applicants who do present some risk to the commission. I've asked Michael Ann to put the amount of $20,000 in the budget adjustment resolution that we'll consider next. But all of that is really up to you all as to how you would want to proceed. Hold up there, Mayor.
Yeah, this is something that's just unforeseen impact. It's affected everyone. I think I like the idea that this resolution has just basically given you permission to go forward and investigate this. There is some legality issues, we know, we're going to have to go with. And I think at this point, I would be in support of this because we don't want to see anyone lose their business over this. Possibly, how many businesses are affected right at the moment that you can come up with?
I personally talked to at least nine to 10 businesses, but I imagine there's at least 15. We've had businesses that are closed temporarily that I'm afraid will never reopen again. And so I'm trying to sit down and figure out what those businesses' hard costs are that, like, you know, if you've closed today and you have no revenue, what is it really going to take to get through the next 60 days? These are hard conversations to have, but they're the kind of conversations we have to have at this point. And I don't know that we'll be able to help everyone, but it will be, you know, the state just announced another $100 million business program today. $100 million, they put together private money to go out to communities. However, if you look into it, even the governor herself said this is aimed at businesses with 40 to 50 employees and over. So whenever you really start talking about, like Scott had said, these different things that are coming out for small businesses, most of our small businesses will not qualify. And if you already have a small business loan, say you're behind on it or say there's some weird terms on that loan, or you've already got all your collateral in one basket, you're basically out of luck. And a lot of our small businesses have done refinancing with SBA and don't have that option now. And so this will be kind of a smaller, much smaller version of a loan program, but hopefully something that can show our community that we're here to help them and that we care. At this point in time, it's really hard to sit in front of a business owner and say, "I will help you walk through this application," but we both know the probability of denial is close, but it's the last opportunity they have available to them. So I'm just hoping this gives us a little bit more options to help some of those businesses that have been in our community for, some of these businesses in trouble have been here for more than 20 years, you know? It's just that time. So my, I guess I should say, my role turned from recruiting businesses to trying to maintain and figure out how to recover. Recovery starts now, what's the plan, you know? And that's, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Right.
And that was kind of my message out to the mayors of the state this morning. In this whole process, the governor is trying to protect the citizens of the state. I get it, I really get it. But she has not looked at the rural aspect or by her actions. Her actions have devastated rural New Mexico. And it's something that we have got to, to get out in front of, like Scott said. And like you guys working, we've got to be in front of this. We've got to try and help everyone we can, but at the same time, we cannot put ourselves in a position that's going to jeopardize us.
Oh, absolutely not. And that is one thing, the first thing I did whenever I came up with the wacky idea of creating this loan fund was I called Mark Roper. And he said, "Under emergency situations, you know, things like this can be looked at and resolved fairly easily." Because, now, he did say, "You can't do a grant program." That's one thing you can't do. You can't give public money to a private entity. But a loan program is fair game. And so we just need to make sure that we understand and that we do our due diligence. And that'll be what we work towards over the next two weeks.
Let me ask you this, can we help our businesses out without issuing a loan at this time? Or is it, is it against, is it against the law too?
We can't give, yeah. So it will have to be out of a loan type of a situation. So the way I foresee this, and of course, this is still in the works, what I would like to see is, from a small business perspective, if you go out and you get a loan, they're going to want you to repay it within five to six months. And it creates these loan payments that are too big for small businesses with small, like, small profits as it is to make. So what I'm hoping to see out of this loan fund is something that can be repaid two to four years down the road with a $100 monthly payment so that it doesn't kill our businesses when we open the door. Because, for instance, the Lidl loan from the state has a two-year period. So you could go and refinance your mortgage at 0%, but you better pay it off in 24 months. So some of these programs are kicking the problem down the line, not resolving the problem. And I just want to try and help make some kind of an impact that doesn't hurt when we have to reopen these doors. So something along those lines.
I'd just like to make it as easy as we can for the businesses that are in jeopardy.
Absolutely.
And also, as commissioners and as the city, if we pass this tonight, then we should also be after our government agencies and we should be after our state agencies on top of it right now so that they don't forget that, because just like you said, rural, rural New Mexico is hurting from this.
I officially have eight phone numbers that I call of our representatives, the SBA, and then every single day to say, "What are you doing for small businesses? Because you're not looking small enough." Like, "I didn't make it today, but I made it, you know, I made it Friday and I'm going to make it tomorrow," to say, "We in Raton are being forgotten. Our small businesses are too small for your incentives." And I know that Scott's doing the same thing. I know that you talked to Victor, and he's had these conversations. So yeah, that's something that we'll continue to do.
I think that's extremely important, but I also think it's important to understand that these actions are, have been taken not just to protect citizens, but to actually protect our healthcare system.
Absolutely.
Is the reason these emergency actions have been taken. And it's very important to understand the ramifications that could happen if we don't protect that healthcare system. It could really devastate the economy and the population, not more than this than these actions that have been taken. So when we're making these phone calls and, you know, let's try not to place blame because it's really designed to protect the healthcare system.
I'm very friendly and I totally don't place blame. I just say, "It's me again and I'm calling to remind you we're here." So I get it, because sometimes it's the squeaky.
Not really worried about your, your presentation. I just want to make sure that there's, you know, citizens who are listening understand that this is nothing to get angry about, that there's, there are good reasons for these restrictions that have been placed upon us. And yes, we need to remind them that, you know, we need their help in helping our small businesses.
Absolutely.
I definitely appreciate you thinking outside the box on this and trying to come up with a solution because I think we all feel that we already are in more advanced shape as a city. We're already trying to work on economic development. Our businesses are already having, you know, struggles. And to watch people going through this is very hard. And especially as a city, you know, what can we do? Our hands are tied in so many ways, especially the way we're funded and the way, you know, things get approved and budgeting and whatnot. So I think this is a good program to move forward on and to try to do anything we can do, you know, within our power to, to help our small businesses.
Yes.
Ready?
So do we need a motion?
We need a motion if we want, Mr. Berry, and Jessica to proceed.
I will move to approve Resolution 2020-18, creating a business micro loan emergency fund due to COVID-19.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-18. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, can I raise a vote please?
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes.
I demand deliberate an act on Resolution 2020-19, fiscal year 20, a budget deficit adjustment.
Mayor and Commissioner, so this budget adjustment does include some of the actions that you've taken this evening, including item M to establish the $20,000 amount for our revolving loan fund. You will see that I have noted under the general fund revenues, we did receive our small cities assistance. We were pretty excited about this about a month ago because it was $124,203 more than we budgeted. And now that we, you know, are in the situation that we're in, you know, it'll cover us for this fiscal year. But going into next fiscal year's budget is going to be extremely difficult to forecast revenues, given the current state of diminishing revenues from grocery receipts taxes. So we have that challenge ahead of us. I did put a memo in your box from Department of Finance. That's something we'll talk about as we enter into our budget discussions. They are giving municipalities the ability to adopt the same budget this year as for the 2021 budget, which I'm not saying I recommend us doing that. I'd like to see us do a little bit of work to try to forecast as best as we can. But we do have to be cognizant that we do have a June 1 deadline that they cannot extend. So it may be something that we entertain and then we work on it after we close out the fiscal year and then submit the final budget in July. So those are some discussions that we'll have, how we want to proceed with our budget discussions in the coming weeks. Also, at the last meeting, we did approve a budget adjustment for the fire department overtime. And at that time, I told you I'd probably be coming back for another adjustment. So we do have still some salary savings due to turnover in staff that I can move from that line item into overtime. I would imagine that our staff there right now is probably working overtime as well, even given the current situation. And then other than that, I just had a few line item adjustments that we needed to make. We are looking to proceed with a contract for the fireworks. We are looking to contract out the shooting of the fireworks so our fire department would no longer be doing that. But to do that, it would probably increase our costs to about $23,000 for the purchase of the fireworks and also the company that would shoot those off. I'm not clear at this point. I put a little bit of extra money there because we may still need to purchase our own insurance. You know, this contractor would provide insurance, but we may still, as a city, because that is exempted, anything related to fireworks is exempted under our current policies with the finance authority. So I'll be looking into that further in the coming weeks. And then also the action we took this evening to approve $5,000 for the visitor's center rebranding is also included in this budget adjustment. Is there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-18, fiscal year 20, budget adjustment number 10.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-19, budget adjustment of the city's fiscal year 20. Is there any further discussion? Michael Ann, can I raise a vote please?
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Item O, city managers report. Excuse me, can we have a, like, a little three-minute break before we listen to the city manager?
I would do it because I might go on for a while.
Okay, we're in recess for three minutes. Would you like to proceed?
Mayor and Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could, I'd like to speak for a minute in regard to the city where we're at in response to the directives of the governor and the Department of Health in regard to the COVID-19 situation. And so the first thing I would say is that I have appointed Chief Espinoza of the Fire Department as the city's public information officer. And I've asked him to keep the public and the media advised on a daily basis as things evolve and change as to the status of city facilities and city crew. And I would state that Chief Espinoza has Chief Burke and also Dusty Russell, who came to us from Union County as their emergency management director. So we have a lot of experience in the area of emergency management. And Dusty, very familiar with the processes and the emergency management community. And as far as getting information, we are on top of the latest information as it comes out. We have continuous monitoring of the situation. And we're really monitoring, is our positive cases of the virus getting closer to Raton? What's the situation not only in Colfax County, but really in New Mexico and Colorado? So we, we talk about that throughout the day. They give me reports throughout the day, a lot of communication there. And they will make all of that available to the public, to the media. And as we need to, we will revise our status and our policies and advise the commission and the public of that. In regard to, or in response to these directives, the city of Raton has closed library operations. We have closed the windows at the city administrative building and at the utilities. Now, I would hold up there and say that if a member of the public wants to talk about utilities or an item that normally they would talk to somebody at City Hall, they simply have to, to call us and we'll be very responsive as far as either handling their need over the phone or meeting with them as necessary. So while the windows are closed in response to the governor's directive and Department of Health, I would tell you that the city of Raton is, is very much at work. And I'll go on with where we're at and loop back to what the city is doing. But I will tell you that previously, we had ceased operations at the aquatic center prior to this morning's date and time. Also, at the shooter center, at the visitors' information center, and the RPS lobby, as well as Raton Police Department lobby, have been closed. And so I would reiterate that with all of those offices, you really just need to contact the office. And we will make the appropriate arrangements for anybody in the public, whatever their need is. I would tell the commission and I would tell the public that the city of Raton primarily only consists of essential personnel. The police are working, our dispatch is working, fire, ambulance, they are ready to respond. And these are the times when the public expects more out of us and, and we understand that. So we are available for whatever the needs of the community are. Our crew that treats drinking water and distributes that to the town. Our crew that treats drinking water and distributes that to the town, they're at work. Our personnel that treat wastewater and run the collection system, they're all there. Solid Waste and Public Works, they're there. And of course, you can't run a city without our administrative crew, and so we, we don't have very many nonessential personnel. There are very few personnel in the city of Raton that can do their job remotely. So by and large, we're, we are at wherever our normal workplace would be, and we're continuing with those services. And we do not anticipate any interruption in our municipal services. I forgot to mention the electric generation and distribution crew, very dedicated crew there. They'll make sure that electric power is, can be relied on as, as well. So for the most part, the city of Raton is deemed essential to their, to their job. You have handout there where the, under the directive, it really exempts these local-type operations, which are essential. And those are the, the several operations, the library and the aquatic center, primarily that would have to be deemed nonessential, and, and we'll try to reassign personnel. They have the option to use accrued leave. We'll try to make it as effective for them as we can, and hopefully we can get back to those operations as well. We are looking past the, these, these restrictions, these orders, and we have identified the economic recovery really as a significant task that we've got coming up. The city of Raton doesn't control directly, but we will play a role in that. We will begin meeting with local businesses tomorrow. I would like to reiterate what we said in the, in the previous segment, that myself and Jessica Barfield are available to offer our, our help, our coordination, and try to be a bridge between these potential relief efforts that are out there through the federal government or state government and our local businesses, and, and work as hard as we can for our local businesses. So we will dedicate a significant amount of time to that effort. Of course, that's not something that we saw coming, so we'll have to rearrange some priorities and some schedules, and we'll continue along that way. While I'm talking about city of Raton personnel, I would comment that today was the last day in our office for Robin Osborne. She was our accounts receivable, accounts payable, and also our deputy clerk. Robin handled our lodgers' tax issues, as we had talked about earlier, and I want to say, we're really going to miss Robin. Now, she's just going across the parking lot to Raton Public Service Company, but she was an extremely important member of our team. She had advanced through the clerk certifications, very good on our operations here in the office, and some of the technology things that we use, and she's going to be very difficult to replace. We are moving forward and trying to keep up with the office operations here, but I want to say thanks to Robin for her four years of hard work on our team. Mayor and Commission, I won't labor a lot of other things that are going on with the city of Raton. It's an extremely busy time besides the, the COVID emergency, but I do have a couple of things that I think are important to point out to you and to the public. I did attend a meeting on March 10, along with Dan Campbell and Terry Sykes. This was the Water Quality Control Commission, and they did hold a hearing on something we've talked about for a, a number of years, and that is nutrient temporary standards for the Raton wastewater treatment plant. Now, I know that that doesn't sound very exciting, and when you drill down on the details of it, it's actually a tough subject to talk about, but I will tell you that the Water Quality Control Commission did give their approval to our proposed temporary standard. We have negotiated that with the New Mexico Environment Department for many years, and this is a big deal for Raton. This is potentially millions of dollars of expense in upgrading our plant that we were looking at. We didn't avoid all the expense, but we did come up with a plan that I think Raton can live with. We know how we're going to go forward on, on funding upgrades of the plant. We have clarification as far as nutrient standards that are going to be written into EPA permits that we'll see over the next period, ranging from 10 to 20 years. That guidance is important for us, that other New Mexico communities really don't have, and we have a good estimate on what this is going to cost. And so we are all for improving water quality as much as we can. However, the concerns were that the cost to Raton taxpayers would be really more than they could bear, and that the technology really is not developed for some of the standards that initially were, were talked about. Now, I would point out that Dan Campbell has really worked on this through the Environmental Quality Association. He is a past president a couple of times of that association, worked with many different people in the environment department, and the document that you see here is a lot of hard work, primarily on Mr. Campbell, and we have got this in place before his retirement coming up. And that's, I'm going to say it again, I'm going to repeat what I said, this is a big deal for Raton. It's a subject that we don't like to talk to, but this is, this is pretty large. So I did want to acknowledge Mr. Campbell's efforts and the fact that this now will go to the U.S. EPA for their approval. We anticipate their approval. Getting by the Water Quality Control Commission was not a rubber stamp by any means. They really balked at the standards that were in here and the, the permit parameters that would be put in for Raton, and I would anticipate that no other community in, in New Mexico is going to get this type of agreement with the WQCC or the NMED. So I would just like to point out, that is significant. We have a lot of other things going on that we like to talk about. This will fly under the radar, but this is very significant for Raton. Moving on, Mayor, and I'll wrap this up. I did attend a meeting of the Affordable Housing Plan Stakeholders Group, or the group that is putting together that affordable housing plan is our Northeast Regional Cog. And so they had people in Raton just before everything kind of shut down. We had really a regional group of stakeholders that met from all over Colfax County, and they really got a great start on that. And we did point out to them that Raton is really unique as far as what we see in coming out in an affordable housing plan, and what our needs would be in that plan. However, a lot of communities had similar issues, such as rentals are very tough in, in all Colfax County communities, and so there's a lot of commonality there as well. We'll continue to work on that for a number of months. And then also, the comprehensive plan surveys that are being requested by our consultant consensus planning. I believe that the, the deadline is tomorrow for citizens to fill out that survey that would be on the city of Raton website. It's a quick survey. The consultant says they've, they've got a, a great response to that, though, as well as, we had a good, strong response to the public meeting that you all had attended, and, and we talked about earlier. I did participate in a telephone conference of the City Managers Association that was organized by the Municipal League this morning. Generally, city managers from across the state had discussed what's going on in their community as far as response to the COVID-19 situation, various policies, maybe what's coming with displaced workers, that, those kind of things. And so good information there. Last thing I do have is Ms. Pat Walsh did attend the meeting tonight, had hoped to address the commission in regard to an incident that happened recently, that's where a, an outlarch dog did attack a citizen that was walking on the streets, actually in the alley. This was an ugly incident, and there are numerous concerned citizens as to the city's response to this situation. So I did invite Ms. Walsh to meet with me. That meeting will take place on Wednesday. It's not just Ms. Walsh. There are numerous concerned citizens about that incident in particular, and generally our, our ability to respond to dog at large. I think there are a number of citizens saying that they really don't feel safe, and we're certainly evaluating that with the police department. I've talked to the chief of police a number of times. It's something that we take very seriously. We'll talk to the citizens, but I would advise the commission that it's something that internally we're evaluating as far as maintaining the safety of our streets. So I would anticipate that Mrs. Walsh will communicate her, her concerns to the commission at a future meeting, and I will facilitate bringing those communications to you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other anything about the condition of the lady that was attacked? Have you?
I, I have not, Commissioner.
I have something small that I prepared, just to be short, I promise. I've just been thinking a lot about this unique situation that we're in, that a lot of us have experienced with the COVID-19, and I don't want to belittle anyone's struggles or trials with that or with anything else, because everyone else has other life things going on. I just have a message of positivity to share, things we can do at this time, because I know that's been hard for me, too, to stay positive. I'll just read my little thoughts here. It probably won't be very eloquent, but it's heartfelt. We can live as normally as we can while following the protocols outlined by the most recent public health order. It's still okay to be outside and walk or exercise if someone is able, and all that movement is good for us. It creates endorphins and releases stress. So if people are able, I encourage that within the guidelines. We can actually read the public health orders on newmexicohealth.org, or go directly to the cdc.gov website and avoid panic and rumor, because I know there's a lot of that out there. I hear things, and I always go right back to that, to that order. So please, I encourage everyone to find the source and minimize the crazy. For me, that means a lot less social media. We can shop locally as much as possible to help our small businesses and do our part for our local economy. We can still reach out in love to family, friends, and neighbors through technology or a socially distant wave or smile. We can support those in essential service industries by taking care of ourselves and by voicing appreciation and love to those who are at a greater risk, from our healthcare professionals to our grocery store personnel and everyone else. I personally believe in prayer and invite everyone to pray for comfort, guidance, and strength, and believe that our faith is our greatest weapon against fear. And we are a hearty and self-sufficient bunch in this part of the, this neck of the woods, and so we are going to get through this. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Jacomo, are you ready? Mr. Chavis, you're done? Mayor Protim?
I want to thank Commissioner Chatterley for those words. They're very true, and don't forget to wash your hands. You don't need to hoard sanitizer, hand sanitizer, washing your hands with soap and water. Yeah, or toilet paper, or anything.
Get back to normal. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, I, I think that Commissioner Chatterley brought up something that I meant to touch on, is very important, is not only can the city of Raton support local business, but it's extremely important that the, the local citizens support their small businesses right now, tomorrow. And many of the, of our restaurants are trying to stay open. You can have the curbside pickup or food delivered. There's a certain new service for that. Many of them are trying to go with that, but we need citizens to step up now and support these local businesses. This, we've never had a need as great as this before.
Absolutely. I would concur with all of that. We, we need to do what we can for our fellow citizens out there, and as a commission, we need to, to kind of be the light that they can look through, that we're, we're trying to alleviate the situation the best way we know how. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.